This is John.
Here.
Barbara. Harley.
Here.
Mary Lou.
Here.
Kelly, can you do the prayer? Oh, this is what?
Yeah.
Ladies and ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one nation, indivisible.
Now, yeah.
I know, almost.
Now, asking you to have your hand in our community and in our decisions. Let us see here, we're just saying a prayer.
Amen.
Okay, comments? Jennifer? Danielle?
I'll wait.
Allen? Okay. Miss Day?
I'll wait.
Neil Seig?
My name is Mildred South and I don't think we can pay him for the attorney's fee or any of those persons. I'll retain the rest of my time if I want to say later.
Noble?
I'll wait.
Calvin Paget?
I want to bring mine before item number 11. Right.
For four? Number one.
Well, I want to wait till I have.
You want to wait until then, okay. Logan? Mike Pierce?
Yeah, well, that's a good idea. Eleven and thirteen I will discuss, but beforehand I got some other I can do. I mean, it's all under three minutes, so. So, you know, I'm concerned about these lawsuits and stuff that the councils getting themselves into. I don't know, some of them not turn out to be criminal. You know, I don't know what's going on. But I feel like you need to protect yourself from what this council got themselves into. So, I'm addressing this to you. That you need to distance yourself from any and all actions this council is planning. Look at the lawsuits and where their previous actions have taken them. They're going to continue doing what they do. You should protect yourself and pay no role in their misdeeds. Take courage that the people are with you, not the council. They're with Leanne. Well, all except Ronnie, and he's never here anymore. I guess he saw the light and where this council was going because he has refused to take part anymore. So, again, take courage. There will be a bright new day for Plum Grove under your leadership. You have the authority to refuse to sign any more contracts and stop the spending for the next two months. Got two more meetings, two more meetings. Ensuring the new council won't be in even more debt. All spending should stop until the new council is proceeded. And I'll wait till we get to eleven and thirteen. Is that okay?
Brianna? Ms. Carey? Y'all will have to look at your agendas because I'm not going to read that because I'm really stuck to a time when it is. So, on hand, I do not feel this is not required of the city secretary to be a member of the Texas Municipal Clerk Association. How much is it going to cost the city? And this was not on the 2021 budget. Number 11 concerning the lawyer fees. This lawsuit was not brought against the city of Plum Grove. This is a private lawsuit against the ex-mayor, her council, Carly Sager and Donald Inlow. There's no amount attached to this resolution and could cost the city a considerable amount. This is not on the budget for 2021 and funds have already been spent that were not on the budget. Back in 216 when Colony Ridge and the developer sued Leanne Pinton Walker, the case was dismissed and the state district court judge, Mark Moorefield, ordered Mr. Harris, Colony Ridge, to pay her legal fees. That nearly totaled $60,000. I cannot imagine how much these fees could reach with so many defendants involved. It could possibly bankrupt the city of Plum Grove. The lawsuit alleges that the ex-mayor and her council in their official capacity used city funds to promote their vendetta toward Trey Harris and Colony Ridge. It also alleges that they were not looking out for the welfare of the city and its citizens. This speaks for itself by looking at the crumbling infrastructure of the city, dangerous roads and intermittent ditches. Nothing has been done to the roads or ditches in the last five or six years. I do not think that they should vote on a resolution as it is in conflict of interest and the legality is somewhat questionable. When John Cronin was attorney general, he posted in an article that stated, "A city council member is disqualified from voting on a resolution to pay his or her legal fees for another city council member indicted on the same facts for the same offense." He also stated, "Although it is not required to do so, a city council may spend public funds to reimburse a city council member for the legal expenses of defending against an unjustified prosecution for open meeting violation." It may not decide to pay legal expenses until it knows the outcome of the criminal prosecution. The city may not pay the expenses of the city council member who is found guilty of such violations. I understand that the specifics are somewhat different, but it does raise some legitimate legal aspects up. It seems to me if the defendants listed in the lawsuit lose, then we, the taxpayers in the city of Plum Grove, would be paying for their legal fees for them to misuse city funds and misrepresent their lack of care for the city and its citizens. Number 13.
Time's up.
I'm almost there.
Time's up.
Are you running the meeting?
Time's up, we can't.
Thirteen. What does the city secretary's contract consist of?
We're breaking the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, with some of my time.
You can't do that.
You've done it before.
Do you want me to read the rest of it?
Well, I, I, hey, look, look, it's simple. Just let him read the rest of it.
This is what we're accused of in the lawsuit.
He's got three minutes.
If it's breaking the Open Meetings Act, why are we doing one?
They're not breaking it. They just traded it all.
Number 13. What does the city secretary contract consist of? Should the mayor have some say?
We have to wait till after the meeting. We're in the middle of a meeting.
So, go ahead, sir. Who's Carly Sager?
We have to wait till after.
You can't. You have to wait till after the meeting.
We're breaking the Open Meetings Act again.
We're going to have to ask that on the other.
Are you recording so we have this?
And Mary Lou Smith. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Number 13. What does the city secretary contract consist of? Should the mayor have some say? So, to who she wouldn't like for her secretary? I do not feel that the current secretary has loyalty to the current mayor, Mary Arundel, or the welfare of the city. I feel her allegiance is with the ex-mayor and this council. And she, in conclusion, with him, is the new mayor to resign so they can get Leanne Pinton Walker back in as mayor for city council member. It happened before and could very well happen again.
Mr. Ortiz? Ortiz?
Actually, a lot of it has to do with this. I was trying to figure out, have you guys already made up your mind whether y'all were going to pay for this off of our taxes? Or is it something that this meeting is actually going to? Determine whether y'all do it or not.
Yes, so it's being decided.
Right. Well, why are we having paper, y'all, in defense?
Do you, we're not supposed to answer your questions. I know, I'm just explaining. We can't answer questions.
Wouldn't this be like a conversation to have? I mean, with us? I'm for sure they want to know. Well, I mean, hold on, I mean, there's some more.
You can come talk to them after the meeting or I can give you their email addresses, phone numbers. If they discuss it now with it not being in certain parts, because I know you're new to the meetings. It's called breaking the Meetings Act and that's what these lawsuits cover and that's not what they do. Yeah, come talk to us after. I'm more than happy to talk to you.
But they're hoping or you vote on it and pass it by me?
Can't do that.
Don't talk out of turn. Michael Schrader?
Yes, ma'am. Well, this is the public comments section. So, we're allowed to make comments. We're not supposed to be asking questions. That, if you wanted to ask questions, that would be like during a motion, when there's a motion on the floor that's being discussed. That would be a better time probably to ask questions. The way I see this, what I've heard about the lawsuits and what I've read, if we don't stand behind our city council and our city elected officials, then the city's going to be dictated to by a developer from now on. So, it will be whatever the developer wants and you'll just take whatever he gives you. So, because if you don't, he'll sue and then you'll be able to plead without a paddle. We need to support our elected officials is what this comes down to. They live here in our city, the developer does not. Thank you very much.
All right, number six. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve minutes for January 11, 2020, and related matters. Thanks, everybody read them. I make a motion that we approve the minutes. All in favor? Okay, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the minutes for January 26, 2020, and related matters. Has everybody read?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from January 26.
Second amendment.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion passed. Okay, number eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Treasury report for December 2020 and related matters. Any comments?
Yes, I have some comments. They are relating to our bill from the Randall Law Office. So, we just got a complete breakdown of the bill, which is, I believe, the highest that it's ever been or one of the highest bills that it's ever been at $33,000. I spoke to the lawyer to get some clarification on some of the things that are on this bill. And frankly, Mayor, we have a huge problem. Your spending is out of control with the lawyer. This amount would be what we would be able to pay.
Are you citing that?
This amount, excuse me, let me finish. This amount would be what we could pay a police officer if we were able to hire one. You've basically used their entire salary asking questions of the lawyer. So, I asked him about some of the stuff specifically. It looks like permitting and variance issues. Let me see, let me find the other one here. There's five or six different things. Permits and flooding. Specifically, you're calling to ask him about the permits and for the new businesses that are going in that have already been approved in the city. For some reason, I don't understand why you're working against the city having businesses, which is really strange to me because the city gets sales tax, which could potentially reduce everyone's taxes. So, I don't understand why you want your neighbors to pay more taxes. Why are you working against?
Why do you think I'm working against you?
I think that, I think that you're working against us.
Because I want to make sure it's legal.
Yes, yes. Because it's already been approved and it's already been done by a previous council mayor. It's already been taken care of. No, you apparently don't because you keep calling and asking over number. Why do you have to ask so many times?
How much did I actually spend?
Quite a lot. I can buy anyone who wants to look at it. You can take a look at this.
Is that for one month?
This is for the entire time that you've been in office. Then, I'm sorry, this is from January. So, we also had.
Are you sure it's just from January?
Yes. One through 21.
It's just for January.
The total amount, the total amount. Yes, that is from your November, December, and January. Yes.
And so, what else was in there?
So, we've only had about three weeks of actionable time.
So, let's crash around and let the people look at it if you're going to make it through.
Okay, oh, I'm happy, I'm more than happy to do that because you have a spending problem. You like to accuse, excuse me, you need to leave.
You're not the mayor.
Yes, I am.
Anybody has a table can ask for people to leave.
Anybody can call point of order. If you're going to speak out of turn, I will throw you out of the meeting. I will have these nice people throw you out of the meeting.
You will have to vote without?
Yes, ma'am, I sure can do that.
Okay.
If you'd like to look at, okay, can you please squirt her out?
One of our mayors I had, we had in here was going to hire a police officer who was not commissioned and paid his fees to go to school.
Thank you for leaving.
And he was not commissioned.
Thank you for leaving.
So, I wonder why our mayor is.
So, back to the issue at hand.
Asking questions.
There's a major problem with the spending and it needs to be curbed. I also spoke to the city attorney and he explained that a lot of the stuff that's in here is where you call and ask a question and then he speaks to Missy about your question. So, a lot of this could be helped if you would talk to Missy about stuff directly.
I understand.
So, there's a, I don't know, there's a communication, there's a communication breakdown somewhere because this is extremely high and it's a problem.
We have to pass the motion. We're on Treasury report.
Okay.
Is there any other questions on the Treasury report? I'll make a motion that we approve Treasury report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine. Consideration, discussion, and possible action for quotes on landscaping for City Hall and related matters.
Yeah, I only got one quote and it was for 10 pallets of grass and to install it. It was $1,500 for the 10 pallets and then $1,500 to install it.
10 pallets?
10 pallets. Yeah, that's, no, it's 1,500 for the pallets and 1,500 for the labor. We don't have to go with that. I can continue to go around. Yeah. I just want you all to be aware.
Yeah. We've got a little bit of time still.
Oh, yeah. We still have to get the plumbing at the.
Make a motion that we table. Number nine.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the annual membership fee for the city secretary to join the chapter of Texas Municipal Clerk Association. I make a motion that we approve the annual membership fee for city secretaries to join the chapter of Texas Municipal Clerk Association.
I second it.
All in favor?
Can I make a comment on that?
Cuts down on attorney fees.
That was actually recommended by the attorney.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the city of Plum Grove, Texas, approving the payment of legal expenses for council members in relation to a lawsuit filed against each council member by Colony Ridge Development LLC, providing for repeal, providing servability, and providing an effective date. Comments?
Y'all have the resolution. Y'all have the resolution. I think there was a couple of people that wanted to speak. I also want to say that I have several emails that couldn't be here, but there are several emails that came in that just support y'all to cover this because if we don't nip it in the bud now, then it will never stop. As long as you do what's best for Plum Grove and not what's best for Colony Ridge, then y'all will continue to be sued if you sit at this table. Mr. Paget, do you want to speak on this one?
Yes. I want to back up to number nine real quick. You mentioned pallets of grass.
Yeah, we're not going to go with that though.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever landscaping you do or if you do sod, there needs to be irrigation and for at least three weeks to a month to establish the growth of that. You're just going to waste your money growing that down and not watering it. I'm just saying. Because I know that there's no well or there's no water over there yet.
Right.
It wouldn't be put in until that's done.
Okay. Back to number 11. I think some of my questions have already been answered. Was the city included with the lawsuit? No, right? Number two, the council that sits here now, I think Carly's the only one that just came in. Are the rest of you going to go for reelection or are you just going to go out?
I'm going for reelection.
You're going for reelection? You're going for reelection?
She's not even supposed to be here.
I'm not even supposed to be on council. I wish I was still on the hands.
And what about the gentleman that sits over here?
No, he's out.
Okay, so. The other thing. The other thing is she brought, I didn't know it, but she brought up that it may be illegal for you guys to vote on each other's thing here. But the thing I was going to bring up is that the public needs to vote on whether we spend our money on your legal fees. And my opinion that for you to vote on your legal fees is inappropriate and not fair to the taxpayers. So, I think the taxpayers, I think that needs to be put on the ballot and let the public have a voice.
Amy.
It doesn't go on ballot though.
Needs to.
Anybody else?
But if what she's saying has legs to stand on, if y'all vote on this, it could be illegal for you to vote on each other's legal standings.
You're out.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Also, you should, this is to the mayor. You should refuse to support any attempt at making Plum Grove taxpayers liable for this council's misconduct. Remember when they were all on top of the world and they gleefully followed under the direction of Leanne? They were all so happy. Well, they were grownups then and they're grownups now and they're, they and they alone are responsible for their actions, certainly not the taxpayers.
Thank you, sir.
Said lawyer fees for the mayor, $33,000. How much are all these fees going to be? If she's all about to spend $33,000 to make sure everything in Plum Grove is going legal because the previous council is now getting in a lawsuit?
You're here. Thank you, sir.
I mean, it's going to cost more than $33,000.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
I have a question about. Why is she here? Why aren't you here? Why don't you ask somebody else besides me? I don't know.
I can answer that question.
I mean, I don't know. Why didn't Missy get sued? I don't know.
I can answer that question.
I don't understand why she came in and not you because she came in the same time you did. You're not signed up to speak, sir.
I'm not speaking.
Somebody wants to know why certain people were sued, feel free to talk to me outside after the meeting.
Okay, moving on here. Anybody else? Speak now.
You have to be signed up to speak.
You have to be signed up.
All right, Mr. Pierce, I actually have something to say on this one. Mr. Pierce, what have I done? What specifically, what law have I broken? What have I done that was illegal?
I don't know.
Would you like to tell me that, Mr. Pierce? I've been on the council for two months, the same amount of time that the mayor has. So, tell me where the logic is in that. The developer suing the specific people that he's, that he's. Okay, then I'll just make my statement without directing it. And Mr. Pierce.
Go away, it's done.
Okay. So, we sought the, we talked to the attorney about this extensively. It is not illegal. He did hours and hours of research to determine whether it was illegal and whether there was precedent. He brought up what Ms. Carey mentioned. It's absolutely not illegal. There's no law against it anywhere in the state of Texas. So, what's happening here is you have a million-dollar developer who is trying to bully the city council of members of the city council that he doesn't like because the city is suing him over water issues. So, basically, instead of suing the city, which would have made more sense to me, he's suing each of us individually. Do you know what that does? Do you know what that means? That means he's suing my family. That means he's trying to hurt my family. He's attacking Barbara's grandbaby, brand-new grandbaby. He's going after her family. He's attacking Mary Lou's son. That's what's happening right now. And if you wanted to run for city council, how would you feel if you wanted to run for city council knowing that at any time you could be sued by a $100 million developer personally and the city's not going to protect you? And everything that's on that lawsuit, which is literally laughable. Everything that's on there, the city council, before me, believe it or not, even though I'm being sued also, the city council did it to protect the city. Every single thing that's on that lawsuit. So, I just want, I want everyone in the room to think about, if you're going to run for city council, are you going to be ready to be sued by a developer who has $100 million?
I'd like to answer that.
You can, sorry.
Oh, well, anyway.
We're going to make a lot.
He didn't finish. He got interrupted. Yeah, we are going to make a motion.
On problem 13.
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the payment of the legal expenses for the council members in relation to the lawsuit filed.
That's our text on it.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I do aye.
Aye.
Consideration, discussion, and plan for, to plan for attorneys for council for Colony Ridge lawsuit and related matters.
I have a question.
There has been an attorney found and he is supposed to be meeting Wednesday, but y'all have to do it so at different times because even though y'all were accused of breaking the Meetings Act, y'all are not.
This attorney said that's not breaking it because we are being individually.
But we're still not going to do it because y'all don't do it. You know what I'm saying? So, you're going to have to go one at a time and talk with the attorney.
I know.
Yeah, because we don't do anything like that. And so, Leanne and Donald will be the ones that are trying to coordinate some of this because that way I'm not in the middle of it and nobody else is in the middle of it.
Right, right.
So, any other discussion that y'all would like to discuss because we're being open and honest about everything?
I don't understand what you're talking about. So, okay, so, Leanne, we found an attorney. He's going to represent us all. But we're going to talk to him individually. We're not going to get into a group and talk with the attorney. We're going to do it individually. So, there's no saying that we broke the Open Meetings Act. Oh, okay. I understand, I understand. So, Leanne and Donald, I guess, are going to get into where? What's Leanne and Donald about to do?
They're on the lawsuit too.
They're being sued.
Is everybody and Leanne and Donald except Mayor? They're on the lawsuit. Is everybody and LeAnn and Donald except Mary?
And Missy.
And Missy.
Question. What are they suing for? I mean...
He's saying that we hired...
Wait. Talk to us afterwards.
Yeah, talk to us afterwards.
We're trying to not violate the opening act.
Afterwards.
Yeah.
Two of them will get up and leave so that we're not breaking the open meetings act. And usually one goes down on that corner and sits, and I sit on this corner and will answer any of your questions.
Everybody that has spoke tonight in this room has spoken against y'all spending money on those personal lawsuits.
Not everybody. We still have to do this afterwards.
Everybody in this room has spoken against...
No.
No, they're not. I understand. Thank you, sir. Sit down.
So that was just a discussion? No action? Have you made on that?
No.
Contract for me. Consideration discussion to start Melissa Pouncy's contract and related matters.
Yeah, I was, I was ending my time. I was going to talk on this. You want me to talk before y'all discuss it?
Your time is up.
No, it's not. No, it's not. No, it's not. No, it's not. I went over this about twelve times at the house. And I went over this about twelve times at the house and it's under three minutes. And it's under three minutes.
But you got to go three minutes.
Well...
Mr. Pierce, talk to us afterwards. Talk to us afterwards.
All right.
This is just a discussion. We're not making any choices. So please come talk to us after the meeting.
Mr. Page.
Miss Page. I always said she'd take it all.
She's going to win.
You're probably...
Okay.
Okay, I'm very loyal.
Hey, so what do y'all want to... To consider...
Can I ask this question though, since this is about me?
I have it, yes.
Since everybody in the audience seems to think that we have a problem, do we have a problem? Okay, do we work well together? Do I get you the answers that you need? Do I do the work that you need done? Thank you. Have I led you the wrong way or let you fall under the bus? No.
So what do we need to add to the contract? Do we need to just...
What is it, two-year contract now? Or what is it?
It wasn't one year.
Oh, I like this one here.
It's my employment. Right. She's not elected. She's actually a paid person. She's the only paid person.
Me and Mike are the only two that are paid.
Yeah. The rest of us are volunteers sitting up here. We don't get paid to do this.
Only baby paying.
She's a city employee.
Yeah. She's a secretary.
Her pay is up too.
Well... So y'all... And we have the years that is...
Yeah, I mean, y'all, I would say so. I would say so.
I think it was one year.
We did a one-year term with her.
Right. But everything else in the city is two-year terms. Do we want to do two years just to make it consistent?
I would do it. I would pay.
I think that's good.
And what else do we need to do differently from the previous one?
Everything else is fine.
Everything else is fine.
Just make it a two-year term instead of one year.
Anything else need to be changed as far as you know?
Well, the only thing I would say...
We can afford to get her insurance.
Right. We're doing her insurance, right?
Not right now.
No, no, no. I mean, that's on the, that was...
That's up to y'all. I don't want to have to say so, so the audience doesn't throw me under the bus like they do y'all.
Right, but no, that's... That's what, that's what we're looking at implementing when we put health insurance in place for officers and things like that. We're looking at doing it. So at that point in time, we could amend to do the insurance or go ahead and put it in there now that when it comes available, she would be added to it.
Right.
And somewhere down the road, we will do have more funding.
And there will be.
She doesn't, yes. She doesn't get paid for what she actually does because she does more than just city staff every year.
Oh, I know.
I mean, she's got four different hats. Yeah. So, but she's been kind enough to do it at the low pay. So eventually somewhere, I'm not going to say that's two years, we could see where we go with the funding.
Yeah, because I make happen.
Yeah. And we know that. We've looked at it in the past. So as long as that can be amended at any time, I say we leave everything as two years. Now, it's just a discussion. So we're not making, we need to actually type it up and do a contract.
Okay.
So that's the attorney.
So are we making a motion?
No, 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 it's just a discussion. Because the attorney has to draw up a contract.
Correct.
Okay.
But at least now the two of them have our thoughts on what to go back to the time to draw the contract up.
All right, there we go. Okay. Number fourteen. Consideration and discussion concerning interlocal agreement with the city of Kenneth, Texas for road repairs and related matters. So this was brought to us by... I think it's just an example.
It is an example, yeah.
And what we wanted...
Carly talked to them and...
It was brought to me.
Right here.
What we wanted to do was look at this as, okay, we got locked into a contract for how many years?
Four.
We got locked into a contract by the previous council for four years at fifty percent that we would have to pay.
Which is unheard of.
And it's unheard of. We asked for copies of cities that would be in line with our size of cities. And what came back is you pay five hundred dollars a month, which would come out to six thousand dollars a year, that you would pay a flat fee, that they would come out, it would be for a year at a time, they would come out and would patch holes and do the maintaining of the roads as far as trash, ditches, everything. And that's what that would cover. Now, of course, it doesn't cover pulling up and repaving and rebuilding up and things like that for certain areas that we know have to happen. But for four years, we were locked into fifty percent and we had to go to the commissioner's court to get every single thing approved. If we wanted to put a pothole, it had to go to the commissioner's court. Boo Reeves wouldn't put us on the commissioner's court. So we were locked into four years not getting what every other city got. And that's why we wanted this example. So that, because ours is up for agreement, we need to get a new one in place. And I want it basically the way it should be for any small city. If this had been in place like it should have been for four years, we would have had potholes filled before our roads deteriorated to the point in which they were. So we need to get with Whitmire. Do we need to have a special meeting to have him come talk to us? Or do we just want to put our thoughts into emails and send them to you to go to the attorney to put it together? Or how do we want to do this?
It seems like we need to get on this as fast as possible so we can start getting some repairs made.
Some of our potholes filled, we can be filled, we can our roads.
Yeah, so, and ditches cleaned out.
We're going to have to go to the attorney anyways.
Right.
Right. But I think if we all send our thoughts on this agreement to Missy and then she can send them to the attorney, just like what you think needs to be different in here for Plum Grove?
I mean, six thousand dollars a year, I mean, a year is a big drastic drop from fifty percent of everything and nothing getting put on the commissioner's court.
Yeah. And what's different about this than the previous agreement, which Boo Reeves, Boo Reeves wrote the previous interlocal agreement. So with the previous one, anything that they wanted to do, like anything, they had to go get approval from the commissioner's court. With this one, they would not have to get approval. They can come out automatically, you know, someone out here calls them and says, we need this clean, this ditch cleaned out of this pothole. They can come out and they don't have to get approval.
Now, of course, this is limited to what we have in this budget.
Right, right. And something else that was mentioned to me was that Liberty County would probably be likely to go with this because it's the same as Kenneth. So they don't have an excuse to not go for it.
I mean, they can't.
Do y'all have to do the five hundred a month?
Well, we can debate that. But the thing is, we shouldn't be treated any differently than any other city. If we were, we're treated totally different than any other city.
Yeah. And keep in mind that Boo spent most of the budget on the helicopter pad at the shooting range.
And another thing besides that, so there are limits to this year on their budget. But this is something we need to look at going forward. This is not a bad deal considering what we're locked into.
And based on our recent meetings and discussions with them, they do want to start on something out here. I mean, we've met with them several times and they wanted to repair, you know, some of the small things and then hopefully we can work on the agreements to repair the bigger things also.
Yeah, because those have to be different interlocal agreements because that's raising and repaving. So those are different. I watched, at the commissioner's court, I watched him approve this one.
So they already approved it?
Yeah, because it was signed on the 23rd of November. Oh, yeah. I think it was January 26th. So I mean, to me, this would have, this being in place for the last four years would have been extremely helpful.
Saved us a lot of headaches.
Yes.
Lot of flat tires.
So is this just an email?
Yes.
Yes. You just need to send in an email what you want sent to the attorney through your recommendation.
We don't have to make an action on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Council input and discussion on GLO updates and related matters. Missy knows this.
She emailed a lot of people work. She signed a lot of people work. That's all there is on that one.
Okay.
They're moving forward then.
Yeah, we're moving forward, yeah.
Okay. And this one should be more of an update. Council's input, I mean, yeah, and discussion on a theme update and related matters.
Still waiting on reimbursement for the last check wrote to Donald for the end of the contract for the inside of the city hall. How's it looking?
Good.
Looks great. What do you think, Schrader? Nice, yeah. So we have to get septic and sewage done and, well, septic and sewage thing, well done, sorry. So we have to go out. I can call people and get bids instead of going out to bid, especially on the well, because I know it needs a new tank, a new foot valve, and a new mover.
And the septic, you said, has to be aerobic?
Yeah, it has to be aerobic because when the building fell, it ripped all the septic out. And so we have to go aerobic. I think we should do underground sprinkling work. So then when everybody's standing outside, they don't, it's sprinkled.
Yeah.
It's only like a thousand dollars worth.
And it helps on the over too.
Council's input and discussion on emergency management report.
That shouldn't even be on there.
Cross it off.
Yeah, just.
Number seventeen?
Yeah. We don't have anything going on right now.
I am. Council input and discussion on fire department report and related matters.
Y'all have the fire department report, but I don't, I think they're on fire department department. They don't want to call or they're calling with their families.
You don't want to read it? Micah? You want to read it?
Keep Mike talking for me, sir.
I'll give them the total if they don't want to read it.
Yeah, just read the total.
Incident types, total number of incidents are sixty-one, total number of incident types sixteen. The biggest thing was probably medical assist.
And they totaled a truck.
Oh, yeah. Yes, and they totaled the truck in that accident.
All three, all three are okay. They have some... They were hurt, but they're okay. They walked away.
Thank God.
Yes.
With council input and discussion on local, county, and state updates and related matters. I don't have any, I got a weather report I got to do tomorrow. So that's about it. Do some COVID stuff. So we can adjourn?
I make a motion.
We adjourn.
And I second that.
His drainage is out of compliance with county standards and it's ruining all your roads. Is, is five people that don't know a damn thing about engineered drainage saying, we think you flooded us?
Did y'all plug here?
You don't know anything.
Okay, there you go.
We have the only, there is no engineered drainage in the city of Plum Grove. There never has been. And when I ask the question, where is our drainage out of compliance? Where? Nobody can say. Nobody can point to one thing. They can't point to one thing other than just, we think, we think this is all these guys. This is what they did. And so I'm frustrated because I've been involved with this since 2010. I've worked with these guys for fifteen years and we've operated and developed lots of places and we are getting along fine with Liberty County. Go drive through our neighborhoods.
I know y'all are getting along fine with Liberty County because y'all back in old South Park. I mean, I'm just saying. Judge Knight is your main one.
You're just saying, do you know, okay, so that's a nice thing to say to all the county roads? That's all working great. Why are the roads in the city of Plum Grove so bad? Why are they not fixed? I'll tell you why. Because the city of Plum Grove has never had the money to fix their own roads. They never have. And they never built them. They never have paid for anything until LeAnn decided she wanted to go to war with Trey Harris and so she started passing a tax, decided to become a real city in providing services and demanding how roads would be built, designed, repaired, approved. And when she did that, now she's in the big game. Now she's a real government. And, but when she did that, she's already signed a document releasing my guy. We're out. They have no responsibility. Colony Ridge has zero responsibility. Their lawsuit by the city, it's complete, it's complete garbage. And so our position is that we do think it's a personal vendetta. That's exactly what it is.
I have a question though, babe.
No, it absolutely isn't.
Was there a traffic study done to what was going to happen to these roads over in that contingency?
No, no, sir. No.
Okay, what is the plan? To my understanding, that back there is probably like five, maybe what, ten, fifteen percent? What's, how are people going to ask us this?
There's never going to be one unless the city, who now, it's your city. We've already been released from it. We've, we're out. That's, has nothing to do with Colony Ridge.
No, you're good, buddy. The developer back there has got to have a plan to upgrade these roads to accommodate the traffic he's fixing to put on them.
No, not, never going to happen. They've already released us. That's already been signed. LeAnn Penton Walker.
She did not sign that. That's a lie. That is frankly a lie.
You could call it whatever.
The previous council, including Mr. Pierce here, are the ones who went with that.
Well, whoever signed it, it's released, it's done.
So now, now you're going to be correct about who signed it.
It wasn't LeAnn.
Well, it was approved by the city and we're released. We have no responsibility.
Isn't that awesome? You have no responsibility for twenty thousand people driving through our city.
Yes, that's exactly right.
There's going to be three hundred thousand. There's gonna be three hundred thousand in about five years.
Yeah.
So there, there's got to be a plan.
Colony Ridge, ladies and gentlemen, Colony Ridge.
There's got to be a plan to, to egress and, and to go in and out. What, what, what is the plan for that amount of people to drive through these roads?
You're asking the wrong guy. This is your city.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, we didn't create that back there.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, but there, there's got to be a traffic study.
To get to it.
Yep, that's exactly right. So.
It had a plan to accommodate that amount of traffic?
We, uh, we filed every plat with the city of Plum Grove. The city of Plum, hang on, hang on.
That's actually not true.
For the traffic to go in and out.
Hey, hey, how about the people in the city of Houston?
Why did she say she couldn't find you?
They have city engineers, they, they have county engineers, they have traffic studies, they have all that, okay? Well, the county was taking care of all that, well, the county didn't have a, a, a civil engineer or a, a, an engineer until recently.
Okay, so.
Okay, but there, but, but when you do a development like that, there's got to be a plan.
If you wanna, hey, if you, if you want an answer?
There was no plan, nobody did anything.
If you, do you want an answer?
Yes.
Okay. The city of Plum Grove had no plan at the appropriate, hang on, no, 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 sorry.
They didn't build the development.
I'm not taking any more questions from you, I'm sorry.
They didn't build the development, you're, you're avoiding my point.
What's your point?
My, my point is, y'all built a development back there and didn't have a plan to get people in and out of there or to accommodate these roads or to upgrade these roads to let your people in and out.
No, 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 we did, matter of fact, we owned thirty-five feet on the side of the road.
What's your plan?
Don't yell, don't yell at our, our people in Plum Grove.
Please, tell us, what is your plan? Your plan is to fix thirty-five feet of the.
Come on, cut this short, everybody, you go.
Oh, party for you, come on. We want answers.
Business card too, you can call.
Hey, you just on the meeting if you're.
The worst section of Plum Grove Road is from here to the new road. That's where all the traffic backs up.
Where the dam, most of the damaged roads are.
That's where the worst, and y'all are, y'all are, y'all are crying over.
Do you know how much money it's gonna cost to fix the roads?
You won't let me back talk. The worst, that, that's the reason the traffic backs up five years to the Cape Rome.
If y'all built it over there, yeah, why didn't y'all plan for more access than just those two? Those two are really messing everything up and.
No, 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 and so, exactly.
And so far, y'all haven't dished out a set to fix what's been tore up.
Okay, so first off, the way this, the way plating works is you come in, you put in your development and you approach the local government about how your traffic is gonna flow in with their traffic. The person who was empowered at that time when we tried to do that, all of our plots had been properly filed, was Leann. And we ended in all kinds of lawsuits with Leann. Leann is the entire problem in the city of Plum Grove, I can guarantee you. And so, she, when we litigated with her, released us. We're out of the city. They, the city has signed away its rights to require us, the developer, to pay for the city of Plum Grove roads. That's been, that's done. It's over, that was signed in two thousand and seventeen, so, okay, so. Okay, so hang on, sir, hang on, hang on, hang on, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. So we offered, we've offered twenty-five thousand dollars and we got the, uh, we got Liberty County to agree to donate its manpower and equipment to come fill in the potholes that matter to us. And do you know what the council said? They had a stupid vote last month to accept our twenty-five thousand dollars. That was total manipulation, that was not even the offer. The offer wasn't to give the city council twenty-five grand, the offer was for us to choose where we wanted to spend the money on the roads that mattered to us. And the city's response was, we want, we want, we want all the roads fixed.
Our attorney was there and he said, in the thing that we had, we chose where we were gonna take the money and fix the roads. That's what our attorney told us, sitting right there at that meeting last month.
Bad idea.
We signed it and he said, we get to choose.
Yeah.
Over it?
Yeah, that was a super bad idea, and so my point to you is that.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
You weren't in our meeting last week, you don't know what was said.
Twenty-five thousand dollars to fix the first twenty feet?
No.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
The offer wasn't to give y'all the money, that was never on the table.
That is what our attorney said.
It was to fix, to fix the road.
It was for us to apply twenty-four thousand dollars worth of road repairs. And that was rejected.
No, we signed it.
No, 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 you signed for y'all to distribute how it was spent. They ain't giving money to the city council. That's over, that's done. We, we have, we have a lawsuit with no leg.
Was it, was it one of those deals where we need more than twenty-five thousand, well, this is all we're gonna give you? You know what? Keep your money, we want more.
Well, it was not done like that.
Was it like that?
I don't understand the question.
The question is, did they turn down the deal because the twenty-five thousand dollars isn't anything that takes that much?
We didn't turn down the deal, it was approved in the last meeting.
No, it wasn't.
No, listen to his side.
Read the, read the minutes, it was approved. We accepted the dirty deal.
He says we're not getting it because he didn't give the city council the twenty-five thousand dollars.
We're not offering y'all twenty-five thousand dollars. We are willing to donate twenty-five thousand dollars towards repair of the roads that matter to us, and so.
Clearly, that's all you care about is the roads that matter to you.
Right, that's kinda, that's kinda the point. And so, you're a city, you're a city, so this, this.
But you wanna fix it right, right? Cause it's gonna take more to fix, I mean, it's gonna take more money to fix.
No, they don't. What they wanted to do was just put gravel on it, that would be the agreement that we got was just.
I'm, I'm nobody, I'm just, you know, a little.
They just wanted to put gravel on it.
But I know that money, that twenty-five thousand dollars is not enough to fix that street.
They still repair the roads, putting gravel down is not repairing the roads.
I think you're missing the point.
The job.
No, never.
We've already been released, this is not our situation. This is a city problem. The, the city council has already released us.
Isn't that nice? He ruins the city by wrecking the roads and says, oh, it's not our problem, it's the city's problem.
No, I didn't say it's.
That's what, exactly what you just said. That's literally what you just said, it's not our problem.
Okay, so, so twenty-five. No, I said the city's already released us, ma'am, we have no legal obligation to fix the city's roads.
And what about your violations of the development agreement? What about the, the multiple TCEQ reports that you got slapped with? The fines, you've had fines from TCEQ. What about the drainage?
Can I respond one thing at a time?
Absolutely.
We're not the wastewater company. It's in your petition.
So once again, you're not responsible.
Hang on, no, 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 ma'am, no, ma'am, let me re, let me respond. You made your accusation, you said your developer's a piece of shit, now let me respond, would that be okay?
I'm sorry, did anyone hear me say he's a piece of shit? Did anyone hear me say that?
I thought it was.
Did anybody, did you hear me say those words?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, you heard me say those words? Okay, while we have a recording, so we'll check on that.
I mean, we're, we're.
Do you wanna hear the answer or not?
Absolutely.
We are not the wastewater provider. We have a wastewater provider that is licensed with TCEQ, all of those investigations have been closed. If you wanna take that matter up with the TCEQ, be my guest. If you wanna sue Quadvest, be my guest. That's not Colony Ridge, we are not in the wastewater business, the end.
So did you or did you not get fined by TCEQ for violations? Did you or did you not?
For sewer discharges, no, we did not.
Yes, Colony Ridge did absolutely get fined, it's public records.
Well, the roads.
Well, th- th- those are issues that need to be taken up by the government authorities. I wanna get back to the road.
Sure, love it.
Y'all been on this for years.
Absolutely.
Built developments, you know that you can't put in a development like that with a road that's not feasible for access and all of that.
That's exactly right.
How do you think you get relieved of the responsibility of at least helping out or at least providing a plan to upgrade to accommodate what's fixing to happen? In five years, there might be twenty thousand people in there right now, but in five years, there's gonna be three hundred thousand people. What is your plan to get those people in and out?
Other than, we've already dealt with that, it's out of our hands and it's up to you.
What is the plan?
Is there anything?
I, I can't tell you.
Sounds not right.
Because nobody investigated that, nobody pre-planned it, and there is no plan.
Uh, you might think that.
Was it?
Well, what is the plan?
Well, uh.
It'd be good to hear, I mean, really.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
No, no, and not in a smart ass way, it's more like, yeah, I mean, if there's something.
We drive these roads every day and we wanna know what the plan is. We've lived here all of our lives and we, we wanna know, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not against.
Yeah, no, and I think y'all are, y'all are, y'all are barking up the wrong tree.
I'm not against the development back there, I just wanna make sure that we have the proper infrastructure to access.
So, you're not responsible?
Because y'all been, I mean.
We've been, yes, we have no legal obligation to these city roads. Zero. And we have offered twenty.
How, how can you say that, sir? Y'all put the development in back there, you have to have.
Go pull the document, she can talk to her attorney about it. She knows what I'm saying is true.
I know what you're saying might be completely true and it's acid性 that somebody would release you from that responsibility.
Yeah.
Correct? You agree?
Do I agree that it's acid?
Just sit your head, yes.
I'm agreeing that that was a bad decision by the city council, but hang on, sir, sir, hang on.
But do you, do you think it's right?
No, okay. If you wanna hear my perspective, you're gonna have to hear the story.
Go ahead.
Cause the history matters. The history matters of, of how we were messed with, jacked with, screwed with, screwed over. We tried to work with the city. We litigated with Leann and the prior council hundreds of thousands of dollars. We tried to work out a transportation plan. We tried that. That didn't work, that's why we got released.
Okay, she's gone now, she's, she's gone now, can, can, can we renegotiate and get this thing right?
Hang on, no, 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 hang on, hang on. Okay, dismiss the lawsuits.
All of those agreements were made before Leann.
Dismiss the lawsuits.
Look into the history of the city, all of those agreements were made before Leann.
I know, ma'am.
Leann didn't sign off on any of those agreements.
Why do we have? Let me ask some hard questions.
You're not telling the truth, Leann didn't sign off on any of those agreements. Mr. Pierce was on the council, he was one of the ones that signed off on the agreements.
Okay, you're, you're talking about technicalities, I'm talking big picture.
Oh, okay, so you're saying Leann signed it, but now you're saying she didn't sign it, cause it's big picture? Come on, man.
The document is there.
Basically.
What, what's your name?
Carly Sager.
Yeah, so, Ms. Sager. The document is there, it was filed in two thousand and seventeen. If you'd like to email me, I'll send you a copy, if you don't already have it. The city of Plum Grove has released us, that is a fact, it's irrefutable. I don't know who signed it.
That don't make it right.
It doesn't make it right, it was a very bad decision.
You just said Leann signed it, now you're saying she didn't sign it.
Okay, you keep going back to that and I said, I just said.
Yeah, I keep calling you out on what you're saying that's not true.
Okay, I just said, I don't know who signed it.
Thank you for that correction.
Okay, are you good now? Cause I'd like to ask a law question, okay, hang on, no, 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 hang on, no, I wanna talk about that.
Be good, because we hate the roads, because of our city. Our city's being destroyed.
Okay, hang on. So, okay, so, so file the lawsuit? Okay, I'm sorry, where was the letter that was sent to Colony Ridge by the city of Plum Grove that said, we have hired an engineer and we have found seven places where your drainage is out of compliance with the engineer plan? Mind you, our drainage plan was designed by a professional engineer and approved by the county's professional engineer.
Just so everyone knows, the county is actually investigating that choice now. So they're going back and looking into it because it looks like some shady stuff happened.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
All, all I'm trying to say is, it, it almost don't matter how we got here.
Well, it does a lot, because hang on, here's the problem, the problem is, oh, hey, listen, what's your name?
Calvin.
Calvin, let's be friends, huh? But first, I'm gonna sue your ass with.
No, I didn't do that.
Right, okay, so you talked to your council, hey, you come at us, then it's freaking war, then bring it on.
Well, we, we, we have an engineer.
But hang on, I called the city attorney, their, their guy, Carl Alred. I said, Carl, you're suggesting that we be friends, we would love to solve some problems. Why don't you dismiss the lawsuit? Dismiss the lawsuit, hire an engineer, your own engineer, to do your own drainage in your own city, not our city. A city we've already been released from, a city that we already fought with and fought our asses off and got released from. We have no legal obligation here, but you're asking us to be friends. I said, well, why not, how about a show of good faith? No, the answer is, screw you. The answer is, when we offer twenty-five thousand dollars, no, that's not gonna fix all the problems.
Actually, that was approved, just so everyone knows.
And they won't.
But it's not enough.
At the last meeting, we approved that.
Okay, but fine, but the, okay.
But the deal was done.
Hang on, did we ask for the lawsuit to be dismissed before we offered twenty-five thousand? No, we didn't ask for a damn thing from the city, but the city, instead of, no, they didn't.
And the city approved it. Yes, they did, it's on the meetings for the last.
Okay, no, that is a total manipulation.
I, I.
The city, the city agreed, we didn't offer them the twenty-five thousand. We offered twenty-five thousand where we got to select where the roads would be repaired. Well, then your attorney is not, not up on the facts, that's what I would have to say. And so, we didn't offer them the money. We still are offering the twenty-five thousand, but we're gonna select where the roads will be repaired.
So who are you offering it to if you're not offering it to the city?
We just need the city.
Who are you wanting to fix the roads?
We just need the city to consent to allow us to work on their roads.
What part of the roads are you willing to?
Consent? That's all they need is consent to work on the road.
Exactly.
I wish that were fair.
Nope, that's exactly right.
No, it's not, that's, that's a total lie.
So, so what happened was, what happened to it? No, it's not a lie, what happened was, they brought an agreement to us and that they were going to fix.
Yeah, or they need to fix our damn cars, we had to replace them.
We just, I don't know if you know, but the rest of our roads are pretty messed up from the.
We just paid five hundred dollars and two hundred.
They were going to, their, their fix was to scrape it up, this is the agreement that was sent to us to review. Scrape it up, scrape it up, scrape, excuse me, scrape it up and put gravel down. That was their agreement, I'm not right here.
But that's, yeah, anybody that wants to talk to me without Carly, I'd be happy to talk with you over here.
Yeah.
Am I still recording?
No.
Mom? You still want me to record? Where's Carly? Over there. I'm doing this cause my mom. Where's Carly?
This, this critical part right here between the state.
Who's he talking to, her now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't, I can't talk about all that, I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, this was the initial offer, um, and the city council manipulated it and did it in their own way and said, we'll take the money. We're not gonna give them money and then have them spend it on the lawsuit, that's not gonna happen, we're not giving them twenty-five thousand.
It was, excuse me, but that was approved to fix roads last month.
We're not, we're gonna pay it directly to road fund, right?
Yeah.
But it actually says on there, and we checked with the lawyer, it actually says that it was a donation without condition.
I don't know.
Right.
But you wanted to talk to me privately.
Yeah, I wanna know why she is being sued, and she wasn't even on the council at the time. She came in the same time Mary did, and Mary ain't being sued.
Well, we're gonna have to get into that in the lawsuit, so.
But you said in the meeting that anybody could ask you that afterwards.
So we're asking.
But I, I think you're against us, I think you're working with Leann.